Let us start the new year off by standing and saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Fattacante, here. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Carfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Seven present.
One of the nice moments of our meetings, our school committee meetings, is to recognize schools and students. And this evening, we have a special student in attendance, and her name is Erin Donovan. And I'm going to read the accomplishments of Erin Donovan, and we're so proud of you, Erin, so proud. This evening's spotlight on excellence presentation on Wednesday, January 7, 2009, will feature Erin Donovan, an eighth grade student at the Sullivan Middle School. Recently, Erin was chosen by Coach Mark Kader of the Greater Lowell Running Club to take part in the Middle School Girls National Cross Country Competition in Virginia. A team of five Greater Lowell students was selected to participate. The team was comprised of three acting students, one student from Chansworth, and Erin from Lowell. The team placed third in all the following categories: the New England Finals, the Regional Finals, New York and Pennsylvania, and the national competition. Erin also placed 91st of approximately 300 participants in a national cross-country race. This evening, we proudly congratulate Erin Donovan for her accomplishments, and also thank her for bringing recognition to our city of Lowell and to the school she loves, the Sullivan Middle School. Erin, congratulations to you. Erin, would you like to say a few words? If not, you don't have to, but if you'd like to, there's the podium. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. I'll entertain a motion now to accept the minutes of the last meeting by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor of accepting the minutes and placing them on file indicate by saying yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Permission to enter?
Yes, Your Honor. One Easter Seals New Hampshire Inc. for the amount of $43,754 to provide for the other placement tuition costs for one student enrolled in receiving services is outlined in the Special Education IEP. Funding provided by the Special Education Department budget.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval of Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacante. Yes. Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Carfield.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Seven ayes, it's approved.
And now we're going to enter into memorials with a moment of silence and ducking chambers for the following people. James Fitzharris, brother-in-law of Terry Coolyard, central office receptionist, and uncle of Carla Coolyard, Lowell High School clerk. Anchen Ross, father of Vaddy Ross, parent information center clerk. Conrad Rock, father of Dennis Rock, Stocklotus School library media specialist. Paul Apples, Judges, father of Francis Judges, retired J.G. Pine principal, and Ann Connors, retired Riley School clerk, father-in-law of Rita Judges, retired Green Health School teacher, and Jim Connors, retired City of Lowell treasurer. Uncle of Paul, Judges, Lowell High School teacher, and UTL president, and Robin Crochum, Daily School teacher. Also, a moment of silence with ducking chambers for Paul Keefe, a loving and devoted husband, father, and grandfather. Mr. Keefe served his country with pride and distinction in the United States Air Force during the Korean War. Edward Mulligan, a loving and devoted husband, father, and grandfather. Mr. Mulligan served his country with pride and distinction in the United States Navy and was the father of the former Lowell City Councilor, Grady Mulligan. Also, Francis Moriarty, retired principal of the Peter W. Riley School and husband of retired teacher Margaret Moriarty. And by John Leahy, a moment of silence for Peter Stillos, father of Dr. Louis Stillos of Lowell. Let us all rise with a moment of silence and ducking chambers for these wonderful people. Thank you, may they all rest in peace. There's no unfinished business, I believe. Any public participation? We will enter into motions. Motions by school committee member Connie Mann requesting that the superintendent update the committee on the required educational proficiency plans for the students in the class of 2010 who have not yet earned a competency determination for the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Seconded by Mr. Conway on the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a new requirement that's been put in place for students who will be graduating in the year 2010, and it's really already being implemented at our high school. Obviously, these students are now basically sophomores, in the sophomore junior range. And for those who have not already achieved proficiency on the MCAS, there are other avenues open to them. And what I'm hoping we can get is a very concrete sense of how this is going to be determined. The administration plays a huge role in making these decisions, whether a student will graduate or not. And I think it is incumbent upon this committee to ensure that we really have in place strong policies so that we are protecting the value of a Lowell High School diploma, and so that our students are very well aware of what is required to achieve that distinction of having a Lowell High School diploma. I know that work is already being done on this, but I think that, you know, obviously, as a committee, we should be informed about how it's being implemented and really be very well-versed in how it's going to be, how it's going to impact the students who are going to be coming into this requirement as a requirement of graduation. So I'd appreciate any information that the superintendent can provide us with.
Any other discussion on this, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, the superintendent. Is there any discussion also with MCAS on what, while we're discussing this motion, we should know about any changes that are coming about because, quite frankly, we're not being funded, and then next year's going to be tough. You know, there should be some discussion about whether regulations are going to change, or, you know, if they're going to be more lenient, or even if they're going to not require this as a graduation requirement, but still have the benchmark for us to, you know, know, to judge, to see how well we're doing in the system. But there's always been discussion that, you know, it should not be a graduation requirement. And I didn't know if there's any discussion through the superintendents or whatever.
Madam Superintendent, maybe you can answer that question.
Yes, actually, I just spoke yesterday with the deputy assistant superintendent about this point. We did receive a memo from the Commissioner of Education, Mitch Chester, and in that memo, he basically stated that all of the present testing, that is, MCAS testing that is in place, will remain in place, even given the financial difficulties that we face. Because as one of the points I think that you're making, which is a really good one, is that it's very costly for the state and for school districts to implement this level of accountability in very difficult financial times. However, this memo also did share with us that they will not be introducing the history MCAS test. So that's the compromise. Not that they're going to take anything off our plate at this time, but they're not going to add any additional MCAS testing. So that piece, we will not have to deal with this coming year. So at this time, that's the only thing there's, because, again, people share this concern across the state. It definitely costs tens of millions of dollars to the state for this accountability piece. And people are asking, and at a local level, you know, there's many resources, both human and financial, that go into, you know, making sure these tests are done properly. So that's, at this point in time, all we know. And that was as of yesterday.
Ms. Martin.
If I could, just on that same topic, you know, I have to say, I'm heartened to know that we're not going to be eliminating that accountability measure. And I think that, yes, it is extremely expensive to implement the MCAS test, but it is far more expensive for us not to know how our students are performing, and for us not to know what our district is, how our district is performing. So I mean, I do, I can recognize how the Department of Early Elementary and Secondary Education is still requiring that and supporting that. That's an effort that has had millions of dollars poured into it and has served a real purpose. I know, I feel, in our district. I don't think it's perfect. I don't think it tells us everything we need to know. I don't think it doesn't warrant improvements. But I do think that it has served a very, it has accomplished some very real goals for us in our district and across the Commonwealth. And I think it's to our benefit that we continue to really be able to point directly at where we're succeeding, where we need to work harder. And MCAS has been a very good, in many ways, a very good barometer of that in showing us what we need to do better. And I think that's the real benefit that it offers for a district as a whole.
Madam Superintendent.
I'd like to just agree with you, Ms. Martin, and also to say that, to come back to a point that you made, Mr. Leahy, with regards to the fact that the MCAS test is a high-stakes test, so it's a graduation requirement, and it's not always the case in every state. I think what we do well here in Lowell is we do provide additional services, tutorials for children. And I think, you know, if we're going to make, and I do think that school districts shouldn't shy away from the accountability piece, but if we're going to hold a high-stakes task, we need to make sure that we're being accountable to the kids and to our students to make sure that they receive their remedial services. And part of this motion is really addresses the, to make sure that those remedial services are in place and that nobody gets lost through the cracks. So I appreciate the motion, thank you.
So, Madam Superintendent, you'll be bringing forward plans and recommendations and so forth. It was an excellent motion, and I agree with you, Connie, that it is a barometer, a yardstick. You need that to let us know how the students are performing. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. The second motion and last motion of the evening. Motion by Jackie Dougherty requests the superintendent update the safety subcommittee regarding the situation with school nurses, including staffing, the status of the memorandum of agreement, and the progress being made to meet state criteria for renewal of the Enhanced School Health Service Grant. Seconded by Mr. Conway on the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think my colleagues know, and I'm not sure if the audience knows, that we do not supervise or have direct responsibility for the nurses in our schools. That comes from the city's health department.
Yes.
That said, however, they provide an invaluable service to our schools. So I'm looking at this as more of an informational piece to apprise the committee about what's been going on, specifically around the fact that we're down four school nurses. My understanding is we have nurse supervisors now in our schools, that the staffing is down. So I wanted to have information about that. And also the memorandum of agreement. We are currently in a grant, we have provisional status for this state grant called the Enhanced School Health Service Grant, which is up for renewal. It's a multi-year grant that helps to pay for the cost of the nurses in the schools. That money, again, doesn't come to the school committee, it goes to the city's health department. But this multi-year grant has a potential of a million dollars if we go out all five years. And so we have provisional status right now for this year, and we're up for renewal for the future. The state will be coming to visit us, I believe, sometime in the next couple of months. My understanding is some of the concerns that the state has, why we have provisional status, is around the communication between the school department and the health department, the nurses in particular, and issues regarding the memorandum of agreement. So I know the administration's been working very hard on this, and my motivation this is to apprise the school committee of what the status is, how we're moving forward, especially given, you know, the very tight fiscal situation we're in. We absolutely have to have every cent of that grant that we possibly can. I mean, we don't know if the state will continue to fund it as much as it has been, but if it is, we need to be on board for getting that. And I thought the best subcommittee for that would be safety. I don't know if my colleagues, okay. So that's basically the impetus behind that motion.
But once again, this is a very important motion and a good motion. And I did speak with the superintendent about this particular issue, and I imagine she must have addressed the committee as well. I know the superintendent is working on this particular issue. And is there anything you want to discuss in a public forum, Madam Superintendent, or just?
I think, given the nature of the issues that we're dealing with presently with the health department, with the nurses, it's best to take it to subcommittee, and then at that time flesh out the issues further, and then bring it to a public forum. Is that all right? But this is a longstanding issue, and it's been going on for a few years, and we are trying to settle it this year.
And the utmost importance is to have that school nurse in that school servicing the children of this city. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving on with the agenda, any subcommittee reports?
Tone down the glee a little bit.
I'm delighted.
I can see that.
I'm only kidding, you know. On the next agenda item, reports of the superintendent, the update on the City of Lowell recycling program. And I noticed Mr. Gunther Wallenstein is in our audience. Madam Superintendent?
Given that this evening, we didn't not have a whole, we don't have a whole lot of reports, we thought it would be a great opportunity to get updated on the recycling program. I have heard the presentation already at our continuing education program, but I think not only for the school committee to hear about the efforts that are being presently made within the city to recycle for the community at large at home who are viewing the meeting tonight. So, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent and school committee members. One of the nice things about going into a New Year's, we've all made New Year's resolutions. For me, one of the nice things is that we have a new contract with a recycling vendor. The contract began January 1st, of course, that's a holiday, so January 2nd, they brought in a new fleet of vehicles with an urgency to collect more recyclables. Most of my job deals with curbside collection of the 27,000 residents, but a lot of my focus of late has been for school recycling. Why is it a focus of mine? Primarily because my department pays for all of the dumpsters at all the school buildings. So it's a direct incentive for me to make sure that each school knows what resources are available to them, and the new contractors coming in with new containers. Hopefully, we'll get some recycling bins for classrooms. Hopefully, we'll get additional toders, the two-wheeled carts. And there've also been promises for additional, I don't want to call them dumpsters, but paper and cardboard collection containers for all of the schools. I did receive a report from Abbottiby Paper Retriever. You've probably seen the yellow and green containers. The Lowell Public Schools for the calendar year of 2008 collected 100 tons of paper out of the schools. And that's only a handful of the some 30 buildings that we operate. So I think we can do a whole lot better, and I'm hoping that through the superintendent's office, we can work on implementing a program that Allied Waste has suggested. It's called Recycle Rosie. It's geared to a certain age group. When I get all of the information together, I'll bring it forth. And they will also sponsor, they've committed a certain amount of funds every year for school recycling that's above and beyond the containers. The outreach that we hope to be able to do is through Channel 22 at the Lowell High School. Roger Mornau has been a tremendous asset with his high school recycling club. They're putting together a PSA, they're going to have Channel 22 onsite filming. We're hoping that it's going to run on the high school morning video announcements, and we'll also get it on Channel 22, 8, and 10. I'm hoping that we have a one-minute video PSA on the new automated collection system. That one-minute video is going to be copied onto 30 discs, one for each school, and then the teachers can borrow it from the office, show it to their classroom, prompt some discussion. We'll have a handout that's available, and it will go home, hopefully creating additional discussion with the parents. Some of it will be translated. I'm hoping that the PSA will be available on streaming video in four different languages and voice-overs in those languages, so that the parents can click on the website and hear it in Portuguese, Camai, Spanish, and of course, the English one. I think the important way to make this all happen is that we all operate as a team, that every school, not just the principals, but the custodians and all of the teachers, you know, focus the effort on recycling. It's tremendous now, especially with the budgets that we're all dealing with. If we can save that money that's not going into the dumpster, citywide, we threw away $6.5 million on the trash. So if we can pull some of that back and focus it to better things, I think it's a great New Year's resolution. And I'll definitely be in touch.
Gunther, while I have you at the podium for the viewing audience at home, this question is posed to me many times by the elderly. Are they going to receive a 64-gallon container, is that so?
Those elderly who have already previously submitted for the elderly discount will automatically receive a 34-gallon cart for their discounted price.
And what if they would like a 64-gallon?
Then they can come down to DPW, will change their account to show that they've received a larger cart.
And the recycling bins that are being used now, the green bins, will continue to be used?
Absolutely. The curbside recycling and curbside yard waste has not changed.
And this new system will have some glitches in it, but we're all going to have to work together to make it work.
Yeah, we still have two months. It's going to affect all of the Lowell residents who receive city refuse collection the first trash day of March, and there'll be lots of outreach.
In the city of Worcester, Nashua, and Hudson, New Hampshire, they have the same program, and it works fine. And a 64-gallon container equals two containers for a family, which you have now. So anyone who finds that the 64-gallon container isn't big enough, then they should have to start recycling.
Absolutely.
And if it still isn't big enough, then they'll have to purchase a bag for $1.50. And this is trying to make people recycle more. Only 7% in the people of this city recycle, 7%. And the cost of recycling, I believe, Gunther, is $650,000?
Our last fiscal year was $880,000 for collection of recyclables.
$880,000. And we only got $250,000, I believe, from people recycling. So the recycling program was not cost-effective. So this is the reason we're reverting to this program. And hopefully, the city will be much cleaner, and people will certainly recycle a lot more, hopefully. Just, Jackie.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to make a comment. I really appreciate Mr. Wallenstein coming here tonight. I had a motion a couple of months ago asking for the city to work, for the schools to work more closely with the city around recycling. And I know last year, we had a couple of pilot projects. One was at the Daily School in particular, maybe that was two years ago, where we were gathering stuff, but the curbside pickup wasn't happening for the schools. If you can imagine a cafeteria, saving all those big tin cans and all the cardboard boxes, you've got to get those picked up every week. You can't have them lying around the school. So I was very encouraged when I heard that the city had a new contract with a new recycling contractor, that vendor, that was going to be working more closely with our schools. So my hope is with that renewed support, that we would be able to really beef up what we're doing on the school side. Because I think not only is it better for the environment, better to save money for the city, but we need to be teaching our children about how important recycling is. We need to, that should be part of being a good citizen today, is recycling, not littering, things like that. So to go back to my first comment, there is a motion already in play, I think it was back in June, maybe, that I would look forward to getting an update in a couple of months to see how the program is working. And I think that would go through the facility subcommittee, probably, to see if there's more we can be doing to work better with the whole recycling department and be good partners with the city on this issue.
I think the schools are doing wonderful. What was that figure, Gunther, you gave us?
Last year, those schools with Abbottiby Paper Retriever containers collected 100 tons of paper.
That's marvelous, and we should applaud them for that. And I'll let you know one other secret. The city of Worcester, there's 25,000 residential homes in Lowell. In Worcester, there's 50,000. Worcester picks up their trash and disposes of it cheaper than we do, and we have half the amount of residents. So we're looking forward to work with you, Gunther. Yes, Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, too. Are we recycling in the schools yet?
Yeah, paper, yeah.
Many, many schools? When are we going to do the plastic, the cans? I mean, this is, you know, we have had motions on there. I mean, it's, to be honest, it's time we start doing it and start talking about it. So we should have bins for cans. The paper, the paper containers are good, but, you know, it seems like sometimes they don't get picked up enough. And then more of the paper, some of the paper's floating around the parking lot for a while before they get picked up. So, I mean, we need to have those containers picked up on a regular schedule. And we need to also get rid of the cans and the plastic. And there's probably tons more paper in the schools that we could recycle.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that by bringing this up, that it will fire a spark and that everybody will, especially with the new vendors bringing in a lot more containers. Right now, the international market on recyclables has taken a nosedive with all the other economics internationally. So it's really only paper and cardboard that has a returnable value. And under this new contract, we do hope to see a payback. We do have a ceiling that we have to meet, but after that, the city will be getting money back on its paper and cardboard. Bottles, cans, glass, tin, aluminum doesn't have such a big markup on the market value, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't recycle it. So absolutely, I will discuss with the vendor. I know that when we wrote the contract, we had a list of schools. We had an inventory of number of containers for paper, a number of containers for bottles and cans, and those schools that have the space for it and the need by quantity will receive metal dumpsters for cardboard only. So we did include bottles and cans on that list for this new vendor.
Okay, because, you know, we all know what the finances are going to look like next year. If we could line this up for next school year and have a dumpster for paper and, you know, whatever the high returns are, I'm sure the papers at the schools would probably not even touch in that for what we could recycle. I mean, those bins are out there for the neighborhood and maybe both schools, but you could fill up three of those every two weeks, probably.
And part of my visit was because a lot of residents were calling in saying, "You're making us fit into a specific trash container. You're making us recycle. I don't see the city, I don't see the schools, I don't see whatever recycling." And so I wanted to make sure that we stepped forward in '09 and made sure it happened and lead by examples to the residents that we're forcing to recycle. And I'd be happy to come to the facility subcommittee meeting and discuss how it would happen.
Yeah, I mean, anything we can do to get this rolling and to save money, because I know we'll split the profits 50/50, so we'll... But seriously, we could probably create a lot more cash if we just did the paper.
The school department has their own recycling program, and you have a contract, I believe, that picks up those containers, don't you?
All of the material collected at the schools in the previous contract went to our curbside collector, F.W. Russell, and they took it to the market. The previous contract didn't have any profit sharing, the new one does. And our ceiling is so high that we're only going to reach that citywide if we can include the volume that's coming out of the schools.
Any other discussion on this particular issue? I just want to say that the City of Lowell has many, many dedicated employees. And I don't know one more dedicated than you, Gunther.
Thank you.
This man, 724, I think he eats and sleeps in recycling. And really, we really appreciate it and thank you for it, because your heart is into this program, and I think what your leadership is going to work. Thank you.
Excellent. And perhaps I can come to one of the next principals, the all-hands meeting, and we'll have the literature to share with the principals.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good night. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, professional personnel?
Do I read it?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes. UNIP members have donated four sick leave days for Margaret Farrick, Title I social worker at Lowell High School, who has been owed on medical leave. The request for donations was approved by Assistant Superintendent Susan Mulligan. Please feel free.
With approval by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Is there anything else to discuss before we adjourn? Yes.
Point of personal privilege, my first one I've ever done in my entire school committee career. And I brought in audio visual, too, please. It's a big moment for me. Timothy Golden and Officer Tim Golden, who's our resource officer and who's the head of the Drug Awareness Program, and I'll get you a copy, Madam Superintendent, what's hard to visualize here, and a former court officer, ruler of the Lowell Lodge of Elks. The Elks do a program for drug awareness, and this is a program that is already, this week will be put forward for all our elementary schools and our middle schools. And I wanted to, I told Officer Golden that I would mention this at a meeting and that the importance of this is really to get education out there, and the Lowell Elks have done a lot of effort with our education in terms of donating dictionaries and other programs, and this is one of their fantastic programs. So anything that we could promote among our elementary schools, Paul Thompson's an excellent individual, someone who's really pro Lowell, and obviously, Tim Golden, who's a former school committee member, is behind this, and I think it'd be a good program. So I thank you very much for your attention. And Madam Superintendent, anything you could do to push this along the way? I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And before we adjourn, I just want to bring this to the attention of the committee so everyone will know you're invited. There'll be a celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life Saturday, January 17th, that's this Saturday, from 12 noon to 2:00 p.m. at the Saungus Arena. Laura and Robert Smith, as always, will be a gracious host on this special day. And it'd be nice if we could all attend and celebrate the life of this great, great America. With that said, motion to adjourn by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacanti. Thank you for a great meeting.
17 isn't this Saturday. Next one.
What's that?
17 isn't this Saturday.
It's not this Saturday?